I'd like to call the village board meeting for Tuesday, January 3, 2017. To order with roll call, please.
Kraus?
Here.
Dudek?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to allow trustee Jim Kozler to attend the village board meeting via FaceTime.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstayed.
Good. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll now move to the open forum where the public is invited to make an issue-oriented comment on any matter of public concern not otherwise on the agenda. I identified some residents.
Oh, you have a pledge of allegiance.
Oh, geez. I went out of sequence. I apologize.
It's a Monday, Tuesday.
And it's at 6:00.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for calling my attention.
recover.
We'll now go to the open forum where the public is invited to make an issue-oriented comment on any matter of public concern not otherwise on the agenda. I've identified some residents that want to discuss an item, and that's on our consent agenda that will be pulled. Is there anything else? Anybody else want to talk about anything happening in the village right now? Okay, we'll go ahead and close open forum. Mayor's report, I have nothing to report this evening. And I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items number 1 through 5.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Dudek?
I started so fast, I didn't have a chance to. I did have a question on the warrant.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and take that off?
And I also have a question. Let me see. Bear with me a second. On item number 6. So item number 1 and item number 6.
All right, so I'll redo that. So I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items 2 through 5.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Dudek?
Yes.
Cavelli?
Yes.
Kozler?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to approve the warrant dated January 1, January 3, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
What questions do you have, trustee Dudek?
So it's maybe a comment more than a question. On the first payment that we make out of the general fund, the check for $1,002, my comment is, I think that if we have businesses that don't...
What page are you looking on, trustee Dudek?
The very first page of the invoices, the very first, very second item that's paid, $1,002.
I got you.
You know, given the situation with that particular Cary business, I would hope that we wouldn't be spending money there if they can't follow village regulations. I think that's, it's great to support local businesses, but when local businesses don't support and follow village regulations, I have a problem with that.
Understood. I still can't see where you're talking about. Oh, this one. Okay.
Do we want to vote on that or move on to 6, and I'll make my comments on 6?
We'll vote on 1. We'll go to 6. Second. Any other comments on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Dudek?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Kozler?
Yes.
Cavelli?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, moving to number 6 on the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 017-01-01, amending section 10.32.005, parking prohibited of the code of ordinances of the Village of Cary for Crenns Avenue and Mary Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Hello, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you this evening is an item that was discussed previously at the last committee of the whole meeting with regards to a proposed parking restriction on Crenns Avenue in the vicinity of Cary Algonquin Road and Mary Lane. Before you is the, is an aerial photo depicting the parking restrictions as directed from the committee of the whole at the last meeting, which includes parking restrictions on the north side of Crenns Avenue between Cary Algonquin and Mary Lane, and on the south side, which is essentially 135 feet from Cary Algonquin Road, which places it approximately near the property line between the second property from the west. So that leaves essentially two parking spaces for use on the street on that side of the roadway. And then additionally, we would be signing existing parking restrictions, which are already in effect, per the Illinois compiled statutes, which essentially prohibits parking in the intersection, and as well as within 30 feet of the approaching stop sign. And additionally, we recommend that the Mary Lane parking restriction be extended a few more feet to the north of the intersection, given the narrower width of Mary Lane as compared to Crenns, due to the driveway that's opposite side of Mary, right at the intersection of Crenns. That leaves one remaining parking space on the street between the next driveway and that signpost. And I'm happy to answer any questions and take any additional feedback that you might have.
So I pull this because I have no issue with the boundaries that we set. But as my fellow board members would recall me commenting on as it relates to Burger King, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking to myself, is it necessary to have six signs in such a small area? Can't we have a sign, for instance, at the corner of Mary Lane and Crenns that faces towards Cary Algonquin that says, "No parking here to corner"? Actually, paint the curb yellow. And then on Crenns, on the opposite side, have a sign at basically Mary Lane and Crenns also on that furthest away from the T-intersection home that says, "No parking here to corner", and again, painting the curbs yellow. We can eliminate, in my opinion, three signs here very easily, and the sign pollution in this, in parts of this town is, to me, it's just not acceptable. And this is a classic example of putting six signs in such a small area, Eric, it seems like overkill to me.
Yeah, we can definitely reduce the signs, especially with the "here to corner" for westbound Crenns, like you suggested. That's definitely something we can do if we implement the proposal in place. I would caution against painting curbs, because that requires a regular maintenance item that we'd have to go back. They do fade rapidly. So we would have to be repainting those curbs and adding those into our painting plan probably at least a couple times a year.
Okay. And again, I'm not suggesting that that is my solution. I just happen to, I don't know why this hasn't, you know, been an issue for me in the past, asking about the yellow curb scenario. But clearly, from looking at this, I think this is way too many signs in such a small area.
I think this is something that, you know, we'll certainly look at. I think the exhibit here that Eric has in front of you is just kind of more just informational to help folks understand exactly where the no parking is going to be, not specifically where the signs are going to be located. So certainly appreciate that feedback, and it's something that we'll look at if this is approved.
Additionally, depending on the configuration of the parking restrictions, the more gaps we introduce and the more complicated the restrictions are, obviously making them clear and understandable, and then hence enforceable, gets trickier. For example, with the two spaces that we have allowable in there, making sure that that gap is actually identified, we do have to have a sign right, right at that end of the limit there. For restrictions, for instance, where it's on both sides completely, obviously it's easier to do with just one simple sign, because the whole block in that case is clearly signed with one sign and no parking.
So where the two cars are, that's sort of a gap area where we're going to allow those two. Okay.
Right.
So technically, you'd have to have one more sign there because of that little gap?
Correct.
I can appreciate that. I just, again, from an aesthetic standpoint, whenever possible, we could use a sign that says, "No parking from here to corner", as opposed to all these little gap signs. The community looks a heck of a lot better from there.
We also try to cohabitate signage wherever possible. So if there's existing signposts, we would try to put multiple signs on the same post, or put them on light poles, for instance.
Okay.
In this particular case, there's not a lot of other posts to share, but we will definitely take that too into account when we do put signs up.
Okay. Thank you. Eric, for the sake of the audience and a refresher for the board, could you refresh why we came up with this, this pattern, what some of the other recommendations that you were making, and how we came up with this particular plan?
Certainly. When this item was first reviewed by staff, we had sent out letters to several of the residents in the neighborhood. I believe over 60 letters were issued. In that letter, we recommended at least additional single option to get the discussion started, which was labeled as option 1 when we presented it to committee, which had restrictions of parking proposed on the north side of Crenns, and then just for the first, I believe it was about 50 feet from the intersection with Cary Algonquin Road on the south side. Through the feedback we received from the residents, as well as additional analysis by staff, before we presented it to the committee of the whole, we also looked at two other options that were discussed. Second option was kind of a reversal of that first option, where we restrict parking entirely on the south side of Crenns, and then only from the first, from the driveway on the north side of the roadway to the Cary Algonquin Road intersection. And then thirdly, the other option would have been to restrict parking on both sides of the road completely. And the fourth was the do-nothing option, which is always there as well. So based on that discussion through the committee, it was suggested that a hybrid, I'm sorry, a hybrid of option 1 and 3 be considered, given the fact that I think there was some concern from the committee that the homes, especially closest to Cary Algonquin Road, would not have any parking and have some distance to walk, and there was a desire to leave some parking available on the street for their guests. So that was the impetus for leaving those two spaces on the south side of the roadway between Mary and Cary Algonquin, while still restricting it on the north side and near the intersection on the south side to alleviate the congestion and the concerns with the incoming and outbound traffic.
I thought what we discussed, maybe I'm wrong, but it's taking that restriction and moving it along to the east part of Crenns, east of Mary, where it was less restrictive because there was no homes, there was no driveway over that way, and leaving the south end more open and not as restrictive to the residents.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'll make sure I follow.
Well, I remember trustee Chapman mentioned it. I thought it was a good idea, where you have the four cars along by Crenns, restricting that area so that it doesn't impede the residents in the first half of Crenns. Because if you look at it now, the way it is, you have homes in the beginning of the area. I mean, they're walking quite a distance if they have guests over, or if they have to utilize street parking. So I thought that that was our initial discussion at the committee of hold that we discussed.
Wasn't how I understood it, but if I misunderstood that, I apologize. I think the main desire was to, because of the cars coming in off Cary Algonquin Road off a main roadway, especially with the angles in place, they're not expecting to see cars, especially that densely parked as they come in, and that was a significant portion of the safety concern that the police and public works department had.
Now, we had talked about, to make it easier for those people that actually live over there to move that side and make that broad brush. I'm sure you probably have it on your previous PowerPoint that you presented at the last meeting.
But if you did, and I don't know if this was a reason or not, I don't frankly recall, but if you moved that to the, let's see, what would that be, side of Crenns? I'm thinking where the solid red line is, the large solid red line. Is this the area you're talking about?
The west side?
Yeah, the west side.
Yeah, I thought, I thought originally what we had discussed was keeping all this restrictive, basically, and leaving all this portion open. So the south end would be completely open.
So the north side?
And then this would just be closed off, so that there would be some parking access for somebody who lived right here or in this area. Otherwise, right now, they're hiking.
So for the folks down on this side of the table, trustee Cavelli?
Sorry, I know.
So you were saying on the north side of Crenns?
Restricting the parking on the north side, but then leaving the south side open, so that the homes, you know, those first three homes right there have, you know, closer access to vehicles that may, they may need to park on the roadway.
Yeah, that's definitely something we could consider. And this is just a quick exhibit to kind of show the current off-street parking situation as far as what those driveways approximately can accommodate. You can see that last house on the far left does have a longer driveway. It actually has six spaces in the driveway, not counting the garage, that it actually can hold vehicles. And that's the distances, at least from the currently as proposed, parking restrictions for those houses that you mentioned, to the furthest, to the west. They have between 90 and 175 feet from that space. So it's not a significant distance, but it is a distance.
Well, I know trustee McAlpine brought up, you know, people have elderly parents coming over to visit, so that was some of the concerns I remember that were brought up.
Yep.
We could definitely consider that. I guess the one concern, again, would be, let's see where this cursor is, this distance of a car parked here for those incoming cars, particularly coming from the northbound side into the intersection. They're coming upon a vehicle sitting pretty close to the intersection, in which that's where the safety concern is, where they're having to go around it, and then the conflicting traffic on the westbound side and the interaction that it could pose.
Have there been any accidents in that area? Do we cover that last time? I don't remember that portion. Okay.
Excuse me. We'll let you, excuse me, we'll give you an opportunity to talk.
No, there was, in our traffic analysis, I don't believe that there were any traffic crashes in that area.
Okay.
On Crenns.
Okay.
Eric, are we, so for any of these restrictions, are there state IDOT guidelines that say that parking cannot, you know, resume less than 18 feet from, you know, the corner of an intersection? I believe there are, but I don't know if that shows.
You see them listed on the slide here to the left there. We copied out these sections from the Illinois compiled statutes.
That's from the state.
From the Illinois traffic code.
Okay.
And oftentimes, especially with the intersection, people don't understand that a T-intersection is still an intersection. And if you, you know, you use the prolongation of the lateral lines of the intersecting roadways, you're not supposed to park within that square.
Right.
And that does occur there routinely.
The red dotted lines depicted there, so not the solid, but the red dotted lines, those are actually the, what would be the existing current restrictions per the Illinois code.
Okay.
So the red would be filling in the gaps, based on what I understood from the previous discussion. But regardless, if, in the do-nothing approach, those red dotted lines are, with or without signage, because of the Illinois code.
Have we ticketed people out there for that? Sorry, I know you just sat down.
It's not very often that we enforce those type of regulations there. It's generally based on a complaint that we respond to. And I know on Mary Lane lately, we've been getting a lot of complaints in regards to vehicles parking over the sidewalk that we've been citing there.
Okay. Has that cut back on some of the illegal parking with the either warning citations or regular citations?
We just cited them. We cited them based on the fact that there was a complaint.
So I'm just wondering if the educational component, if, like you mentioned, most people don't know that, if that would cut back on some of the illegal parking in that area?
Well, perhaps, but I also believe that because it's been going on for such a long time, it's ingrained into, you know, the habits of those people that reside in that area.
We should, we should bring this back then, right? I mean, so.
There's some people here that I'd like to hear some comment from. If you would, like, just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
I want to hear what they have to say. People want to talk about it.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Whistler. We are actually, the house that's on the corner, that there's no parking in the front or on the side with this proposition. And you saw in the driveway, there's only two spots. And in our reality, there's actually only one spot. Once we get our lift van back, there's, we won't be able to park two. We actually have three adults who are handicapped and have the thing. So if you guys block that, we would be forced to ask the village to give us handicapped spots out in front of our house anyways. And the other thing is, our daughter, we brought her so you could see, she has a lot of support. She has a hospice care team that comes. She has an occupational therapist that comes. She has nurses that come. We have 24/7 nursing. So it is very busy in front of our house. When we received this letter, we were talking to the nurses about it, and our overnight nurses are saying that they don't feel comfortable walking from down the street and leaving their car down the street in the dark. They said it's not very well lit there. And one of my daughter's nurses will be up here, and she can talk to you guys, too, about what an inconvenience this is. According to the FHA, Fair Housing Association, you're supposed to be accommodating to those with handicaps. This would not be accommodating. We get monthly supplies, about 50 boxes plus oxygen tanks, heavy oxygen tanks. If they're not allowed to park in front of our house, then how are we going to get that stuff up the hill from Mary? Your, in this proposition, there would be two spaces available across the street. The family that's there also has, from what I understand, because I see the ambulance coming and going and some nurses coming and going, they also have somebody who is medically fragile. Not sure if that's why they have extra cars, but we have, right now, we have four, because we have one down. But typically, we have three vehicles ourselves, and then we have all the visitors that are coming for our daughter, and as well as for us, for our health. I suggested, when they first sent the letter out, I suggested making it a one-way, because I see the flow traffic pattern is coming off of Cary Algonquin. When we back out of our driveway, people coming in are flying through because they're trying to cut the traffic. So if traffic's coming this way, somebody's turning this way, they're speeding to turn into the subdivision to miss this car. Well, if we're backing out of our driveway, us are on the other corner, we're backing out of our driveway, they're flying in there. That's at a risk. We've never had an accident, but it is always a risk. So my suggestion was to make that one block a one-way street. That way, you're not blocking any, it's not double traffic. As it is, the buses were having a problem going through there. They rerouted. They go down Main Street, and they don't cut through the subdivision anymore. So that's not an issue. The fire station is the next block down. There's a street right there that they can come in and go into the subdivision, as well as all the other entrances on the other side of the subdivision. So this entrance and exit does not need to be, I mean, you could even, not that I'm suggesting a dead end, but, because it would be nice for emergency vehicle to be able to get out, but I'm suggesting making it a one-way, just that one block. Emergency vehicles, it's faster to come into the other entrances than it is ours anyways, and the buses don't come through there anyways. So maybe, and that would eliminate the problem of people speeding into the subdivision and crashing. You don't have to eliminate any, any cars, and they could still have access getting out, in and out other places. There's probably four other entrances and exits, and that would still be an exit. That way, you're only dealing with traffic one flow, and all the parking stays there. Then we don't have to worry about adding expenses to the village by asking for the handicap parking out front. We've already got the, we've done everything that we could on our own to adapt it, the house. We haven't asked the village for anything. And I'm asking right now, my family's asking right now, please don't limit that parking, because we have a lot of people that come, a lot of people on a daily basis that come to our house. I'm going to let my husband.
You can come up. We just have to, we speak on the record here, and we have to have a counter.
Do you have any questions before I sit down?
And as it sits right now, we have permission for the overnight nurses to park in front of our house, because there is no parking at night anywhere.
Yeah, the chief gave us permission to have the two overnight nurses, they have the license plate numbers, and they don't get ticketed unless it snows. Then we've asked our neighbor Troy if we can have them park in his driveway if it snows overnight, because he does have ample parking. The, his driveway is bigger than ours, and the one, like you saw, has six cars. They have ample parking. We don't. We just have basically one, once we get the wheelchair lift fixed.
And we do have a garage, but we can't use it as parking, because my daughter supplies equipment, wheelchairs, you know, special equipment that she does, and we also keep them in the garage, because we don't have the room in the house to, you know, accommodate everything that she needs. I mean, like I said, we have 24-hour nursing. We have therapists and different people that come every day. I mean, the street's never packed from us. I mean, during the summer, we have, you know, besides I have my brother's truck right now, because my vehicle is broken. But normally, it's just the nurse's vehicle, or my son's, or our suburban that's in the street during the summer. I mean, we had another vehicle that I sat.
The microphone's.
Is gone now. But to take away all the parking around our house, I mean, that's not going to work.
So is your thought to have the street be one-way going south or north?
That was my suggestion from my wife.
Going out.
So Crenns running one-way towards Cary Algonquin?
Just our block.
Just your block?
Yeah. Because Mary, there's another exit right there. And then you go down Crenns, and whoop, another block down, there's another entrance and exit. So if you just did this one-way, then you're not having two cars trying to go. Just having an exit.
I mean, you know, my daughter's support, I mean, they're going to have to park in front of other people's houses, but they're going to start complaining about that, too, now.
Even if they would have to walk from down the street.
In the dark, through the snow, because they can't park in front of our house. And, I mean, you guys brought up over-parking on the sidewalks. I mean, it hasn't been an issue in the winter. I understand it is an issue in the summer. And, you know, we do not block the sidewalk in the summer. I mean, nobody ever walks on our street. They always walk across the street to the sidewalk and go the other way. But, you know, as of the winter, we never get bothered for parking over the sidewalk. I mean, we only got two spots. That's it.
What would?
I mean, the only other option is, I mean, we're going to have to make the driveway even bigger than what it is.
I understand that. Some of the rationale that we had that brought this to our attentions, we've had several complaints about the park, the intersection being really congested. When people park along that side, it's very difficult for cars to navigate getting through there. So we're trying to come up with a plausible idea that would be fair for everybody.
I mean, at least keep one side of the street open for parking.
Well, that's what I was just going to propose, if the board would consider maybe foregoing the no parking directly right in front of the house, and keeping the no parking, that small space that's, that would be the west side of the, going back to where we, that option, was it option number one? Or option number two? Because by eliminating that one space that's to, I guess it would be the west of your driveway, that would unclog that intersection a little bit more, too, and then still allow you to have parking for your, your help that you have coming in for your daughter. Is that something that the board would be willing to consider?
Yep. And, I mean, also that, I mean, I've lived there, and you guys have said that you've received complaints about people parking, you know, further past those dotted lines. Where the one red spot is around on Mary, where I used to park on that side with my vehicle, and I've got like 20, 25, 30 feet away from the fire hydrant. So there's never been a car parked any closer to that fire hydrant than I've been parked. And the same way on the other side of my driveway, I, there's never been anybody parked further than my driveway except me or my sons', and it's right at my driveway where it's legal to park. And it's more than adequate from the stop sign. I mean, that's, that's 30 feet, 35 feet away from the stop sign. And there's never been anybody parked in front, in front by that stop sign.
Never.
Not by our house.
When there's, when there's a bus.
Oh, parties.
When there's a bus coming, some cars are waiting at the corner, so maybe that's what they're talking about. Often, there's two different cars that park from.
There's a lot of cars that pick up their children when they're getting off the buses.
From the stop signs to our driveway. We have people parking there, giving them kids.
I forgot about that. That's an everyday occurrence. And it's only when, you know, they're letting kids off the school bus.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the village board on this topic? Do you want to come up to the, please, just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Willian Forte.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Pull it down.
Willian Forte. I have been working with Kaylee Whistler for a few years now, and I do park, and I'm familiar with the parking system over there. And normally, when we go in and out, it's not constant bunch of cars going out. We have one nurse, 12, six hours, a 12-hour shift. And I don't think it's convenient and even safe, but get convenience. And I don't think it's convenient and even safe, but get convenience, but safe. Like, for example, I leave here at 10 o'clock in the night and I have to walk pretty much a block and the street is not really that lit. What is, I mean, you think of a danger, I know it says a safe neighborhood, but again, for safety purposes, I don't think that's convenient for nurses that are coming in and out. And like I said, I've been working there and a lot of time I tried to pack to consider the neighbors, the meal box, the garbage. I park within limited boundaries where I'm not taking up every space. And again, I don't park close to the stop sign because it is a law. So I can say it's so congested, but again, I'm there four days a week, sometimes five days a week. And again, it's in and out. It's not like we, nurses and therapy take about six spaces in the block, no. I'm there, when I leave in, my nurse come in or sometimes therapy or delivery truck will come in. That's, it is not like they are taking so many space that I have to just restrict everything. There are other families that do park there and if I see somebody parking across the street or in front of that house, I will park across the street again in front of whoever, neighbor, I don't know. But again, I give a reasonable doubt, I leave space for that meal box, for that garbage and other stuff. So if you can put it into consideration, I really appreciate it. And I speak for the fight for the nurses too.
All right, thank you very much. Did you want to have a comment?
Hi, I'm Troy Roush. I'm at 689 Crenns, which is the second house on the south side from the corner. And just really wanted to express my concern about the number of vehicles and the safety issue. This last summer, with the vehicles being parked on both sides of the street, as we've already gone over. Cars coming off of Cary Elgonquin Road at a high rate of speed. For me to navigate out of my driveway in between parked vehicles on the street, it's very difficult and it's a real safety issue. Several times, I've backed out and people are coming down Crenns Avenue and they don't stop for you. You have to stop for them and you're halfway, you know, halfway in the street and they continue to go around you. It's very, very dangerous. So I've got a number of things that I wanted to say and present. And firing back, I did watch the meeting from last, the last meeting and I had basically responses for everybody in that voice their opinion. But I think after what we've heard today, my suggestion would be to go with option two, which would allow parking on the north side of the street for the care that's needed for that household. It would eliminate the dangerous situation that I'm in backing out of my driveway. Now I have a clear line of sight from both directions. And, you know, I think if we clear that south side, people coming off of Cary Elgonquin Road, they don't have to, they don't have to navigate around parked vehicles on the side of the road because they're on the right side of the road already. I think it's just a safer, safer environment. We can talk about the school bus stops that are there. There are actually four school bus stops there. One of them, I don't know why, it stops on Cary Elgonquin Road and the students exit off of Cary Elgonquin Road onto Crenns. And that's one bus stop. The other stop is on Mary Lane, Mary Lane, they exit Mary Lane and then they have to cross Crenns Avenue to get to the south side of Crenns Avenue. The third bus stop is on Crenns Avenue. There the kids exit Crenns Avenue. And where they all end up would be in option, what was, oh, option one. Where the proposed parking is to be on the south side of the street near Mary Lane. I think that's just more potential for an issue. So I think option two, I'm going to give you a workout here, huh? Option two, I think, is probably the best solution for the most people. It helps out the residents on the north side. It helps me out on the south side. My neighbor to the, to the west, that, and the corner house on the south side at Cary Elgonquin and Crenns. I've talked with them about this and they're okay with no parking. They've got the long driveway, they've got available parking. My driveway is available if needed for certain situations. I don't think it's an issue to have no parking on the south side, the entire south side.
That's, as long as you don't live in the fifth house on the south side. If you live in the fifth house on the south side and you have somebody that you have to get into that house on the first, the first house that's in a wheelchair or, you know, needs care or you're carrying all the groceries, yeah, that is an issue for the people on that, on that south side that are not being able to park by their houses.
The fifth house, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that's where that landscape truck is?
Yeah.
But, so there's parking now, right? I mean, according to option two, I don't understand what you're saying.
We're going to block this off with this one that's on the screen and we're going to block, make all of this no parking, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to the first house here on the south side.
Right, okay.
I have to park if their driveway is full. Now, is that the one that has six cars? Okay, so that's really good. So maybe I'm going to the second house, you know, with grandma and I'm pushing her. So I think.
That's Troy's house.
That's me.
That's Troy.
Okay, so if somebody's coming to your house, you're going to tell them to park, you know, way down the street to get to your house? Okay, I mean.
I've been there since 1999. I've never had more, more visitors at my house that would fit in my driveway. Never, so my folks do come over occasionally and they're, they're more active than I am. So they wouldn't mind parking down the street. So, you know, from that standpoint, resident number one and two on the corner, I don't think it's an issue today. As Chief Finland had said at the last meeting, it's better to go more restrictive now and then back off if needed down the road. I agree with that.
I'd like us to look, at least look at the ADA options there in front of their house. That's something that we didn't talk about and we didn't discuss. And that's something that's available there.
Eric, could you go back to slide two, option two, please? If you look, it looks like there's, I think this option two is viable. I think that the board would probably be appreciative of this as well. But it's also identifying the fact that it's already part of the state statute about parking, about maybe enforcing the no parking in the intersection because that's part of the intersection that we have situations there now. So it looks a little bit more restrictive than, I mean, it's restrictive the way it is. Now, a decision does not have to be made tonight. We could come back and look at a situation. I'd like to get some other feedback, some other residents that are here if they have anything to add to this.
Thank you.
No questions for me?
I'm good with option two.
I appreciate your.
I think it's pretty restrictive and if the residents are good with it, I'm good with option two.
I mean, again, the main thing is safety. And that's what we talked about, the whole, it centers around safety for everybody there. We certainly want to be, you know, I think our concerns were to make sure that someone doesn't have to travel too far if they have elderly or if they have any type of other issues, whether it's additional care. So absolutely, I'm open to that option.
Okay, yes, you can come back up.
I think we might be okay with that, other than the fact that those families, okay, so the first two houses are okay, but then you've got the third, fourth and fifth houses, where are they going to park now? But also, maybe if there was an extra spot on the other side of our driveway, so it's still within, if you're going to open up the north side, then open up all of north side, so the one spot on the other side of our driveway. But I also wanted to ask you, is there a reason why we're not even considering doing a one-way street on that block?
Yeah.
I'll address that. I've had experience with this in a previous assignment. And it was more related to a commercial establishment and they put a choker in, which basically restricts one roadway, one-sided roadway to make it one lane. And what I have found is that the, it's difficult for people that normally use that to understand that it's a one-way. So people that live there will expect a different level of enforcement than versus individuals that are coming through there and adhering to the signs that are posted. The other issue is, you know, I don't know the exact width of the roadway. I would defer to Eric in regards to that. But certainly, by allowing parking on both sides of the roadway, we're restricting it to a amount that you could not have two cars opposing travel. And that's no doubt the reason why the buses aren't doing that now. Plus, what I have seen in my experience is that there are a couple of vehicles that have trailers that park there on a routine basis that do take up a lot of area on Crenns Avenue. And that's during the time period where parking is allowed on the street overnight.
Chief, just a second. Couldn't we build a wall? There's a lot of talk about building a wall, but couldn't we build a wall across from, you know, the corner of Mary Lane across Crenns? They do it in displays, they do it in the city.
You're talking about cul-de-sac-ing something?
Yeah.
I would tell you that that's a bad idea.
Okay.
For a number of different reasons. Number one, wherever you put it, and I know that Eric's going to agree with me on this one, but wherever you put it, now any emergency equipment can't turn around. They have to back out, fire apparatus and maybe some of the bigger public works vehicles especially. And then, don't get me started on snow plowing because I'm certain that Director Morimoto could talk about that as well. So snow removal would be an issue as well.
Okay.
Did I get that right?
Perfect. And to your point, you mentioned, could a spot be placed on the other side of your driveway? Right now, it looks like the current statutes for how close you can park to the stop sign are about 30 feet. Yes, I believe you could add one spot more on that other side of the driveway. It will be pinched pretty close to that your driveway approach though. So backing out of your driveway, depending on the angle and how close that vehicle is, could cause a little friction for you, a little bit of a comfort level that would change for you. But yes, there is currently room if you're hugging the approach, so.
Another suggestion for, you could put like a turn out only so you can turn right or turn left and then they would see that they can't even turn in. It's just a matter of concrete, putting that in there and a sign. Yeah. I'm just thinking of all the other neighbors too, if there's enough. We want safety and just restricting the parking doesn't stop us from all the people speeding to go into the subdivision. It's the three houses, us at the end, are trying to pull out of our driveway. I mean, you still haven't resolved that issue. So that's why I'm suggesting the one-way. And if you just make it, I mean, people will get used to the change. Changes happen all the time. I mean, if this is a safety issue, you're talking about change anyways and putting up signs and redirecting and all that, so.
Excuse me, excuse me, you guys, hang on, let her finish speaking, that's all right. Want to hear?
So what I was suggesting is, if you make it out only, emergency vehicles come in through, like the fire station comes through on Mary anyways and they could still exit out there. And if you have a concrete thing where you could turn either right or left, people can't even come in. So, and you could still plow very freely both ways, so that's my suggestion.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on this topic? There seemed to be some conversation over here. Did you want to offer a suggestion or something?
I think, I think we were just talking about as far as speeding goes and.
Could you?
There is also an issue during baseball season.
Could you just state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Chris Agante. I live at 699 Crenns. So I live on Wolf and I live like in that intersection. So yes, they do have speeding there and we even have more speeding as we get down into that area because, oh my gosh, you don't want to be late for your baseball and you don't want this and you don't want that. So I'm not quite sure about a one-way on that street, how, you know, how it would totally work. But I think we all have some issues with, besides the parking, how it's a thoroughfare. People do not want to have to stop on the way back from the train. So it's pretty darn easy to turn down Wolf and just nail it up to the corner and then get on Cary Elgonquin. We also have, and I don't know about you guys, but when I turn off a Cary Elgonquin to turn onto Crenns, I don't know if it's because it's not marked very clear, but I have almost been rear-ended about a good three or four times because people think that's going to be Main Street. So there's just this, and I don't know if it's because they're not familiar with the fact that there's two entrances, you know, or I don't know what the deal is. I just kind of like look in the rear and go, oh, you know, and then they kind of figure out, okay, I'm going to be turning on Crenns. I'm not turning on, on Main Street. I know it doesn't sound like a great big deal, but I think that's why we're kind of frustrated on that street, waiting for something to possibly happen. And yes, when landscaping time starts, our street is crazy. I, I know people have a right to make a living. I know they have all those things. But there's an awful lot of landscaping people and there's an awful lot of trailers and tractors and things that are just parked out there. And I, I just, I know there's many people that somehow find places to park all their trucks and things like that so they don't have to be out in the street. And I do think it was talked about and it was said that if they had them attached to a trailer on a truck, it was okay. Okay, well, if you go by them close enough and you go walking and things, they have them up on bricks and the truck's just close enough to look like it's really attached, but anyways. So I think there's just been a lot of disregard. And for us that tried to like maintain and keep things going on the block, which has been kind of a, you know, it's been an uphill battle in town to have things and bring them back. And I think we're pretty, not excited, but I think we're happy that many of the houses on our street have been taken back again now and they're redoing them and it's, you know, the neighborhood's starting to come back. We sure don't want to have something happen on the street where it looks like, okay, nobody knows what the heck's going on. It's just a free-for-all, you know? And I feel bad that the people that did get the letters, that complained and go on and on, don't have it to come forth to at least say something because they're really good in the backyards. Okay, we can really share things and how we feel. But I don't think anyone wants to put you out. I think they just don't want to hit somebody or dog or something else when they're just trying to exit the street. And I think many of us also, I think many of us go down Main Street and then kind of like cut over on Wolf, I know I do. Cut over on Wolf, you know, like if the lights, I'd just go down that way and then go over to my house. I know, but.
It's legal.
I do it right. So I mean, that's all I kind of wanted to say about it.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion regarding this?
Why haven't we ever done any traffic calming in the Village of Cary? Speed bumps and things like that or ripples? I see them employed in other communities in order, especially for neighborhoods like this where we're talking about, you know, people speeding through and kids. Has it just been, Rick, you've been on the board the longest.
And I've mentioned those things too.
Yeah?
So.
All right.
They fell on deaf ears.
All right.
You know, I think, to me, we also had the conversation, you remember a few years ago, about possibly dead-ending James Way? I mean, I don't know that, if we don't have to make a decision today, I would prefer that we don't. And it sounds to me like there's enough to study here that we should really evaluate it, get, you know, maybe more input, Chief, from you and perhaps even from Eric. I mean, who knows, maybe the answer is to dead-end that, I don't know. But today, you know, given the differences of opinions and a lot of information that we didn't have when we first talked about this, I don't know that I'm in a position to say one, two or three. I don't want to just make a short, slighted decision.
Can we put the speed trailer out there to do some traffic counts? Or have you guys already done that?
We could, I would recommend using the speed trailer for traffic counting. I would recommend using our other dedicated equipment for that. The winter time, the tubes don't work in the winter time, obviously, because my plows will rip them right off. But there's other ways I can, I can try and get some data.
Also check the speeds if that's a complaint by the residents, you know, like maybe try both. both, see.
Yep. We can get some speed data collected for sure in this area. One, just a comment is with regards to the one-way concept. It's something we could look at further. Just one thing to consider, though, that if you did make it one-way outbound on Crenns, that we would have to pay for some resurfacing, restriping on Cary El Gawnquin Road because obviously the turn lanes in would no longer be in effect. So you would have to remove those and put a strip median there as well as some signage. The county DOT policy, I had some experience in similar situation elsewhere on the county system. They don't let you just grind off the striping and restripe. They will make us resurface that lane and restripe. So there's a more expensive cost than you would think for a simple striping change in that regard. But that's just something, a side effect we'd have to consider if we did wanna go down that route. There would be some county DOT coordination as well, given that they have jurisdiction over that roadway.
I, I like the idea of looking into some of the speed bumps type of thing, because we talked about that also on, on Georgetown. We talked about that on Georgetown, too, you know, that that might be a solution for some of those areas where residents are concerned with people going very fast and the possibility to be proactive versus reactive on an accident type of situation. So I kind of concur that we don't, I don't know that we're in a position that we should make a, a quick decision. I think we should make sure we make the right decision.
Sure. I, I would say that at a staff level, I would strongly recommend we would not implement speed bumps or speed tables in this area. They cause some other unintended side effects, specifically with our snow plowing equipment and the impacts that it does have on the, the plow and the plow assembly. And then obviously the plows will then, the impact on them will damage and ship away at that pavement. And then secondly, the noise factor as well, that the residents would have to hear with the wheels hitting those.
I, I think, too, sometimes in between the, the speed bumps is that folks go over those and then they try to catch up and so they speed up in between the speed bumps. So that's something that we also need to consider.
That's exactly what I was gonna say is, and there's acceleration and deceleration noise issues that you tend to incur when you put speed bumps. Speed tables are a little bit different and I will tell you that the fire department will not like speed bumps as well.
Okay. Well, that's why we have you guys for your expert opinion on this kind of stuff.
So there is other issues here, too, in terms of sightlines and remembering that Cary El Gawnquin Road is 35 miles an hour.
That section, yes.
Yes, I think it's 35. And people are coming off that onto this roadway, so, you know, you, you might have someone carrying a little bit more speed coming off of a roadway that's 35 miles an hour onto a residential street and that might give perception, especially with the turn, that they're traveling faster than they actually are.
Okay.
Eric, I wanna hear back from your counterpart in El Gawnquin, in the village of El Gawnquin, please. They use that on some of the backways coming into downtown El Gawnquin. So I wanna hear, you know, what, what they say about it and obviously I'm sure they hear from the fire department.
They use what?
Actually, I'm aware of some, they, they actually received a grant to try a whole number of different experiments and different types of traffic calming and I think based on what I understand, a lot of them weren't very successful or only marginally successful relative to the cost.
They also have in that area radar speed limit signs that indicate or display the actual speed of the, the vehicle in addition to a displayed speed limit sign.
Well, I'm just talking about on, on River.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
There's an electronic speed detector?
Yeah, in at least two areas there are.
Okay, all right.
What, what about, just throwing this out, and this might be really not feasible, but what about putting a stop sign? A three-way stop? I, I don't know, I'm just asking. We've added a lot of stop signs around our, I know there's one in front of my house now. I'm just curious if that would stop some of the traffic flow there.
No, stop signs are, it's even documented through some FHWA studies that they are not effective traffic calming. What Jake Reifman mentioned with the, the effect of cars when they are inconvenienced by a stop sign that's not really warranted, they tend to accelerate harder and speed up to make up that lost time. And also we'd have to meet the warrants. So in this case, I'm just very certain the cross-street traffic volumes at Mary wouldn't trigger the warrant for us to put it up and, and meet those federal guidelines.
And because you have cars coming off of Cary El Gawnquin Road carrying a little bit more speed and you're stopping vehicles there, you might have multiple cars stop there, you may incur or induce more rear-end accidents.
Makes sense.
So when you guys are gonna go back to, to continue to evaluate this, it sounds to me like the northbound Cary El Gawnquin turning eastbound onto Crenns because of the deceleration lane, that would be a, a challenge to a dead-end, correct? Is that what you're, okay. I, I don't need you to answer it now, but a- as you reevaluate this, can you include whether or not there be any value to having a left turn not permitted sign on southbound Cary El Gawnquin at that curve, at that intersection so that the only people coming into the street would be coming northbound instead of both ways? I don't know if that would help or not help.
I don't know if it would entirely solve the problem, but we would also, again, have to go through the county and more than likely repave that turn lane and restripe it as a center median. So you wouldn't build a design.
Even in the sign, you have to do that?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Leaving that lane as a turn lane and then having a sign that prohibits it, it'd be a conflicting message that the MTCD and I'm sure the county would not permit.
I have something to say. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I, I move to table this to the next village board.
Yeah, that was our next step. We were consulting with our attorney. There's a lot more information that obviously we need to, to gather to make sure that we're making the right decision. We don't wanna make a hasty decision. We were trying to act on resident feedback that we've had from residents that were frustrated and concerned about, actually that whole street from, actually down by Maplewood all the way, we've heard a lot of concerns from people, so we thought we'd try to be proactive on this. So there's some more information that we will gather. I will entertain a motion to, to table this or you could entertain a motion to refer.
I, I admit the motion.
Second.
Do you wanna go, go to, back to committee? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's a motion on the floor from.
Motion was to table to the next village board meeting.
I second it.
All right, we have motion, a second, roll call. Any, any other discussion about?
Shouldn't we go back to the committee of the whole rather than right to the board meeting?
Yeah.
I would think.
Yeah, I would like to, yeah.
That's fine.
Can we change it to just, Jim, you wanna change it to say, can he change it to say, can he move it back to committee of the whole?
That's fine. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Second, okay with it, too?
Second is okay.
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay. Judac?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Kozler?
Yes.
Cavelli?
Yes.
Thank you. This is, item's been tabled. Thank you very much for your input. Find it very valuable. Learned a lot from the, the neighbors. Thank you for stepping forward and making your concerns known.
I have a question. Does that mean that we are coming to another?
Yeah, we'll discuss this at another, you can look on the, the motion was to bring it to the next committee, the whole meeting, which would be on the 17th of January. That would be at 6 o'clock.
Okay, here.
Here.
Okay.
Just, you can also watch our Cary News Weekly and look on our website. All, the agendas and things are posted on there, so you'll be able to see exactly what we'll be discussing.
And if you, if you have any questions, you can reach out to Director Morimoto here.
Do you have a request?
Thank you. Moving on to Minister Nishreport.
Mayor, just a question. Between now and that next meeting, is it going to be the chief and Eric, Jake looking into some options or are we gonna do nothing for two weeks and then just have a lot of conversation again? Because that won't be beneficial.
I'll, I'll address that because Eric, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll try to get some data collected in regards to speed and things of that nature. I don't know if we'll be able to do that.
We, we've heard the feedback here tonight and the three of us are gonna regroup and we'll come back with some thoughts.
Thank you.
I should be able to get data. I'll use our video counter.
What we might not have is speed data. We'll go with traffic count data for sure. We don't, yeah, so.
I think I would only ask that you work with the folks on the street to look for as many alternatives that work for the greatest amount of people as possible because, you know, I don't think anybody here lives on any of those streets that are impacted, so my input is not as important as hearing from the people that live there.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minister Nishreport?
Thank you, Mayor. We're starting to jam on the budget here. I've got a couple dates that I wanna confirm with the village board. Can be reaching out to you here via email. The one date, our annual budget meeting where we go over our general fund, we're looking at March 11th, which is a Saturday. That'll be a similar workshop that we've done in the past. That's the date that I'm shooting for. If that doesn't work with folks, certainly I wanna try to get the most village board members at the meeting as possible, so I'll be sending an email out with that date. Secondly, I'd like to have a meeting, potentially a committee of whole meeting on February 21st, that would be to discuss our capital projects that we have. This would be a review of the five-year project plan that we have for the village and just an opportunity for us as staff to get feedback from the village board regarding the priority of certain projects. So this is something that we haven't done in the past to the extent that we're looking at doing now. This is gonna be in pretty significant detail at that meeting and just at that meeting, we'd be able to get some feedback from beyond priorities. So that's the plan and then I'll be reaching out to you here via email to firm up some of those dates. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Department reports? Chief, you have anything? Eric?
You haven't heard enough from me.
Never enough, no.
Just a real quick one. On your, on the dais is a copy of a flyer that is part of some outreach we're gonna start up with regards to just educating the public on helping us to avoid sewer blockages by not flushing the disposable mop refills, disinfecting wipes, cleaning pads and things like that. So we'll be sending that out universally on our website and then also targeting a few neighborhoods where we're actually experiencing some sanitary sewer issues in the hopes to kinda lessen those impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any other future agenda items and discussion about the village board? I will entertain.
Just in, just in general, I'm gonna be attending the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus regular monthly meeting in January here. We're gonna be talking about solar energy, so I'll be bringing back some information